Good evening and welcome to the October twenty seventh work session of the Hillsborough Town Board of Commissioners. The next thing on our agenda is for changes and approval, and I'm proposing that we move item seven B to become item two V. So immediately following the adoption of the agenda, we will go into closed session to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve the attorney client privilege. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the amended changes.
Is it two B or two A?
Two A.
Two A, you said.
Two A.
Well, are you moving just the one? Just the one. Yes, there's no need to do that one. We can do that one. So, uh, yeah, so it's two A, not two B. No, two A is the development is the lawsuit. Yes, seven, yeah. So this is seven B.
Seven B going to two.
Two A.
To two A.
Yes.
That's moved to approve with those changes.
Thank you. Sorry. I said, yeah, thank you, Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, thank you. So we'll add a door there, but we're going to go into closed session for a few minutes if everyone would clear the room. There doesn't need to be here for this closed session. Welcome back to open session. Um, so I'm going to give you a report of what we discussed and actions that are going to be taken, and then we're going to tweak the agenda again and go back into closed session to talk about the second issue that we're here for, and then we'll come back and do the rest of the regular agenda. So the Board of Commissioners held a closed session this evening to discuss the town's contract for a license plate reader camera system that was approved as part of the FY twenty six budget uh, to assist the Hillsborough Police Department with solving crimes. The closed session discussion centered on data privacy concerns of the flock system, specifically secondary data use rights by flock and private expect privacy expectations of the community and the town board versus what the flock system provides uh, to us. We consulted with the town attorney about the contract, the town signed and raised questions and concerns about those block system. The consensus of the board is there is a serious gap between the town's expectations and what protections flock provides to Hillsborough and perhaps other customers, and the contract should be terminated immediately and any remaining amber should be removed. I also want to say that Hillsborough Board absolutely wants the Hillsborough Police Department to have funding to for the tools to carry out their mission of protecting the public while also protecting the civil rights of our residents and visitors. Go around the table and see if there are any comments, then they're paying motion. Megan, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no, I think I can send it up wonderfully. Uh, there about, um, yeah, there are just too many concerns in this state about the use of these systems and I think this is the right move for Hillsborough. Okay.
Thank you, Megan. Rob?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that um, I did not take my big diligence initially and really understanding uh, the block system and after uh, more investigation and research and feedback from from the community have come to the uh, to the realization that this contract needs to be terminated.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. Uh, little, little bit more uh, lumpy, uh, but not too much to worry. Um, but you know, I want to say that I don't propose the use of newer technologies because I do want our law enforcement to have, you know, the tools that they need to keep us safe, to keep the community safe. And you know, I do want our law enforcement to know, you know, if there's someone has a warrant out or we're looking for someone that we put a warrant out for, you know, crime or you know, Amber Alert, that sort of thing. Um, but, you know, my concern isn't necessarily with the reality. It's the way this contract is set up. Um, because it looks reassuring, but really it allows flock to override our judgment for theirs. Um, and you know, we uphold the constitution, we take an oath as elected officials, but private company doesn't. We're accountable to our constituents and hearing from folks, I think, is one of the reasons we're having this conversation. Uh, but they're accountable to other people who don't live here. Um, and so, you know, I just don't think this is is going to work um, because of feeling as though um, our discretion is being overridden um, and how we share data and that sort of thing. And um, I really hope, you know, when we have other big purchases that represent a policy shift that we definitely talk about that um, with the community and amongst ourselves. Um, so I think it's it'll be really important and important to hear uh, works his concerns and maybe we wouldn't have signed the contract originally.
Definitely.
Uh, you know, I I agree. I certainly want to make sure that our agencies have the tools to keep the community safe. I think it's important that the protective process learning that a private company can overwrite us is unacceptable. Uh, you know, the the contract, the fine print that we did not see, uh, it's learning about it's very concerning and it is the right move to pull the fork.
Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, um, uh, pardon me, I'm boss. Um, 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 and I agree with Kathleen and 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 the other board members. I think the contract was a little bit overbearing, but I want the police to have what they need. And let me have a have the things that that happened that we might miss if we, you know, without some extra tool. So I think it's it's as best to find the correct tool, perhaps uh, we can look further into this. But but I agree that this is probably not the best tool to use. I think the board board has made the right decision.
Thank you, Ellen.
And I move to terminate the contract and remove the cameras.
All second. Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Yep, thank you. And because we have guests here tonight regarding another closed session, um, we're going to amend the agenda uh, so that we immediately go back into closed session. Um, uh, as authorized by North Carolina General Statutes to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney client privilege.
Move to uh, amend our agenda and go into closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Kathleen. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, thank you. We'll take just a brief minute to clear the room again. Okay, welcome back to the meeting and we are on to item number three presentations. Uh, we're going to hear from until this director. Are you stranded or anything present at all? Presentation for the uh, Hazel Street Water Tank in US seventy A Water Main Evaluation and Replacement Recommendations. Hey, Marie, how are you?
Doing all right. I can still start because I'm not going to be presenting to you, but I did want to just introduce the next two presentations. They are a result of funding we have received from the state to conduct uh, different evaluations. The first presentation you'll hear is from Freeze and Nichols. Krista is here to present to you about our Hassel Street um, tank and our US seventy A Water Main Replacement. These two projects have been on our CIP for several years, and so we're just uh, refining recommendations for that, and those recommendations will show up in the CIP in the normal budget process. And the second presentation you'll hear tonight is from Chris at Hazen and Sawyer. They were selected to uh, update our water system hydraulic model uh, similar to what we did for the collection system back in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. So we've sort of applied the same projects and projections through twenty forty and they have um, plugged that into our model, got our model updated with the uh, pipes that we've added since that time and applied some field work to make sure it's as accurate as possible. And uh, one thing that they have developed that will not be gone into in detail tonight is that they've made several recommendations on our water system side, similar to how we got uh, CIP projects for the collection system, but they've also developed this really cool um, dashboard that could be a long-term benefit uh, to the town and something we could potentially use to expand as we move forward, plugging in different projects. The dashboard um, will allow us to modify different parameters like timing and cost and things like that. So it's definitely something that we're thinking about expanding upon after this project is complete. So I will let um, Freeze and Nichols start on this presentation, then Chris will come up and then all of us are going to leave. So thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I'm Chris Supretis. I'm with Bricks and Nichols, and I'm going to talk to you guys about the Hassel Street uh, tank and the US seventy Water Main Replacement. So starting out, um, as Marie mentioned, these were both funded by an AIA grant, which was for preliminary engineering, just to make sure that we're making the best use of your your dollars here. Um, so they were kind of done as two separate projects, but running kind of concurrently. Um, recent Nichols was selected through a competitive RFQ process, so we did prepare a statement on qualifications and submitted that to the public works. Um, and we have provided preliminary recommendations for both Hassel Street and the US seventy Water Main Replacements in two separate preliminary engineering reports. So starting with Hassel Street Tank, uh, the existing tank is a riveted steel tank that was constructed in nineteen thirty six. It has a current capacity of two hundred thousand gallons. It is currently the smallest and oldest in your system. The tank is currently undersized, undersized, which leads to frequent cycling and operational inefficiency. And after doing some modeling, it was determined that upsizing the tank to five hundred thousand gallons was recommended to meet your predicted twenty twenty five um, average day demand and maximum day demand. And actually, I'm sorry, that should say twenty fifty.
That's better.
I just, I'm sorry, I just thought that I'm like, that's not right. It should have been twenty fifty. Um, so for this tank, we evaluated two sites that are fairly close to each other's. The first site is on the corner of Hassel Street and Orange Street, which is where the existing stand tank is. And then the second site is a larger parcel that's kind of set back from the road. Uh, the smaller site is accessible directly from the roadway. It has some high visibility to the residents nearby. It's a smaller site, so there's less space for a setback, but it would have shorter waterline connections of roughly sixty feet. The second site is larger. It would require a permanent access easement in order to access the site. Um, it's lower visibility to the residents because it's setback. There is more space for setbacks, but it would require longer waterline connections. Uh, in terms of other um, physical constraints, they're both fairly similar, so both have access to power. The elevations are fairly similar, so those are kind of the main differentiators between the two. Due to the different requirements, we do recommend site two because of the size, it would give you more room to come up with a sufficient design. And uh, it would also meet your, sorry, your setback requirements. So looking at the life cycle analysis, we did investigate different types of tanks. We looked at multi-leg, spheroid and composite. And we determined that a spheroid tank type would be the lowest life cycle cost because it has less maintenance required. And that would come in at an estimated project cost of four point two five million.
Is that like the UNC?
No, it's like the one that's a golf ball and a tee.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's like the UNC one.
I think UNC when I think of all that like, so.
Oh, oh, um. Site two, I don't know. What is that one?
Where is that? Yeah, it's so it's on that same block, but it's kind of inside um, the perimeter. So there's houses on the, and I'm sorry that we don't have a picture of that, but it looks like it's kind of within that same block.
All right, that was the thing. It's a landmark parcel. Okay, but it's owned by it's owned by the woman who owns uh, right, the parcel right next to the tank. She owns behind the tank as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, division.
That easement would come from the, who do we need to get the easement from?
It would be the parcel owner who we have to cross to access the site. We can get that site.
Oh, yeah, because it doesn't even touch the site that we have the tank on right now, right?
Right, yeah.
That might be getting ahead of our house. They would decommission the old tank and it goes away.
There, there were two options, I believe. Decommissioning was one option and leaving it in reserve was a second option so that we could do either one.
As an option.
Let's see, but.
Any other questions? Okay, so moving on to the water main. The existing water main is one point five miles of twelve inch asbestos cement pipe, which is very prone to breakage. It serves as the trunk line for the town's connection to the city of Durham. And modeling revealed that it is in need of upsizing. Also, ACP has failed repeatedly, which causes traffic and public health concerns. So this is an overview of the proposed route. Um, what was evaluated was whether it would make more sense for the pipe to go on the north side or the south side. So looking at the needs, we determined that we need to upsize to sixteen inch ductile iron pipe, which would provide the required two million gallons per day capacity. Um, ductile iron pipe is also a much more reliable material than uh, ACP, especially when you're working within roadways. So as I mentioned, we evaluated two different routes. So route one was on the north side and it impacted nine different roads, thirty six parcels and twenty four driveways. Whereas route two was on the south side and had seven road crossings, twenty four parcel impacts and ten driveways. Uh, we recommend route two because it has less disruption to property owners, requires fewer road crossings and is a comparable cost to route one. The estimated project cost is five point one six million. So moving on next up, um, these recommendations are going to help, you know, determine what the future CIP planning is, and then also coordination with NC DOT on improvements in the area. And that's all I have. All right, thank you.
I'll add while she's switching over, if anyone would like to see the actual preliminary engineering reports, I'm happy to share them with you all. They're pretty technical in nature though, but you'll probably see most of it in the CIP attachment to a budget.
Welcome. Thank you. So, most of the board who do not know me, my name is Chris Evans. To the one board member who does not realize she knows me, I have one. My grandfather is Herman Ward. Um, my family is actually parents grew up both Hillsborough. My father, grandfather was Haster at Hillsbury and I met this for many decades. Uh, so Hillsborough is a special place in my heart, even though I don't live here. But I'm not here to talk about really my life story. We're not talking engineering. Um, I have a decade of experience at Hazen and Sawyer doing distribution system services, and that's what we're talking about today. So Hazen itself has over a decade of modeling experience with the town of Hillsborough. We have been involved with continually using, refining and updating y'all's distribution system model so it can stay as updated as possible as well as using it for analyses through the years. Um, we've helped work with you all through interconnection analyses with the Triangle Water Partners. Um, resiliency analyses, fire flows, evaluating pumping, storage. If it's been in a distribution system model, we probably had our hands partially in it. But today we're talking about the Water System Master Plan, um, another AIA grant funded project by the NCDQ. Um, and this one, the RFQ went out several years back. Hillsborough selected us through a qualification process. We then provided a proposal for scope of services, where we can work with them at grants, and that's what I'm here to talk to you on a very high level about today. So I'm not going to dive all into these, but this is a general overview of the scope of what we did in this project. Um, we worked with some of your town planning staff in order to look at how the town's going to be growing over the next fifteen years. We also took the town's existing GIS and distribution system data and incorporated that into the model itself to give it the most recent update and facelift to what it should be today. We allocated those new demands that we talked to staff about. We then analyzed a bunch of deficiencies to see as the town grows, what is needed within the town to supply new demands. If you've got someone popping up on the edge of town, do we have the pipes already there or pumps there? What's needed to actually get them the water and maintain pressures and service to everyone in the town? On top of that, did some other evaluations such as making sure you have enough storage. We just kind of talked about tanks. Is that enough? I mean, spoiler alert is yes, that new tank is, you're not building it undersized as the right size. Um, as well as then a general overview of doing project recommendations, which is the big thing that comes out of a master plan. Uh, Marie kind of alluded to, we did a digital dashboard that's coming to the conclusion. Um, I'm really excited about that, but we'll talk about that in just a few slides. So Hillsborough today. Um, so like I said before, we have the existing distribution model and we were updating it. We took all that little details of every single little pipe, every pipe that was updated, been replaced, added through the edges of town, whatever may be incorporated into the existing model. Several years back, as part of some of the on-call contracts we've done with y'all, we already reallocated demands. So we'd already looked at a few years ago where your customers are all billed and brought that into the model. But as the town grows, production increases slightly, so we kind of just ramped that up to match recent years. So you're the model's accurately reflecting what the plant's putting out and the current day. And Marie also referenced, uh, we did some calibration for the model and got out there, put equipment out, tested the system itself, took that data, tested it against the model to make sure the model's doing what we see in the real world because model's not useful if it's not actually recreating what the real world sees. So the big thing about the master plan is Hillsborough tomorrow and beyond. Um, so we worked with staff. I sat down, I think, one morning and we'd spent like four hours talking about what parcels we think things are going to be growing where and how much and how much water they're going to be using and when they're going to be using it. Kind of what you see there, um, all those dots were just areas where we talked about that there's some form of growth, bigger the dot, more demand we think might be coming in the next fifteen years. Um, and all those demands were incorporated and phased into the model for future time steps, so we could then analyze in twenty thirty, how's the system look? In twenty thirty five, how's it look? And when we get to twenty forty, when all that stuff's online, how's it look? How's the system performing? What do we need? All boils into the recommendations. Um, so we evaluated the system and looked at are all hydrants able to provide the minimum available fire that y'all want to be able to provide? Are you maintaining decent and adequate service pressures? We don't want new demands to come in, new customers come in and they're saying, we want fifty pounds of pressure and that area just can't get it. If that needs to be fifty, the model needs to see it, it needs to be fifty. We also looked at system redundancies. Um, that's part of previous work we've done, but also looking at areas where let's say middle of winter, main breaks. Well, we don't want that one single main to take out a whole neighborhood. So is there areas that need redundancy recommendations? So if an unfortunate event happens, the system's still operating well. And then also we incorporated lots of paths recommendations. So redundancies, resilience, fires, flow, anything we kind of looked at before, we make sure it was incorporated into this project as well.
So when you say the planning year, that means that that there's going to be changes made that year to the infrastructure of the course funding dot. Is that what that means?
Close. Um, that is changes by that year. Um, and it's a little deceptive. Uh, twenty twenty nine is actually like existing recommendations. It's not really realistic to say, hey, you should be doing this yesterday. Y'all don't have the funding to do that. No one can do that. So we kind of made existing be a near term and we just threw twenty twenty nine on it as an idea. Um, twenty thirty looks at when you are all of a sudden saying we've got new growth, uh, that's expected to be by twenty thirty. So if you think you have this new growth coming, you need this pipe also by twenty thirty. Um, and it kind of phases out by that. And each of those dots does largely recommend some kind of recommendation, whether it's an actual project or just like an operational change or some kind of system shift um, related to that kind of time step.
Thank you.
So the dashboard, uh, this is a snippet of it. If I showed you the real thing, I could probably spend another whole hour going through it. But this is kind of my favorite thing that I really pushed our dashboarding team to kind of innovate for your, this project specifically. Um, the final deliverable does include a overall dashboard that shows all the results through all the phases. So existing system, twenty thirty, thirty five, twenty forty, shows what pressure should be, available fire flow should be, what flow should be, what your demands are, really phases everything out. But the very kind of like, be still our resistance, I guess. Cream of the crop right here is the very tail end has CIP project sheet through everything. It's going to summarize all the recommendations we make. Um, and then be able to provide an overview and a map where it is, what it looks like, estimated cost, um, a description of what it is, and you can go through each of them and see what the initial recommended phases are, which can be recommended and applied in different years. Like, for example, um, this is a looping project we previously recommended. It's not critical to this area, but looping is really good for water quality. It's that we don't get stagnant water kind of just sitting at the end of the line. So we kind of recommended this one as twenty forty, but if it becomes a high priority for something, it could be moved up, applied in an earlier year. A lot of these recommendations as well can be town or developer funded, so especially some related to new businesses coming in or new areas being developed might have more developer participation. And lastly, um, town staff will ultimately use this to identify which projects they plan on bringing forward to the fiscal year twenty twenty seven budget. Also, swear approval, um, as we wrap all this up, that'll be, they'll bring that forward. And that is my very high level overview of this one project.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There's a great, see some of those visualization because they're helpful to digest a lot of information in a short period of time. Thank you. That's for.
Yeah, I'm excited.
So that uh, that picture of what looks like Everest pretty much sums up, I feel like, it's built by our challenges, ours.
Little dots on it. I saw them on there. I'm like, hmm.
Budgets, those are the budgets.
Yes, they are. They're money, they're dollars.
Dollars five.
Absolutely correct. Were there any other questions about them?
Welcome. This is uh, pretty um, illuminating and a lot of hard work and it seems like.
It'll be helpful for us. It's nice to be able to visualize projects coming up and actually have some interaction with a a model where because we know that these are just projections and they always change. And like we were talking about, or you just never know when the development's really going to happen, even with the best intentions. So we'll be able to sort of manipulate that dashboard to be like, can we push this off? Do we need to speed it up?
It's like more than just like a data table.
Yes, it's a little bit more than just a piece of paper to uh, say this is what it costs and this is when you should do it. So we're excited about it.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
As always.
Thank you.
Next up, consent agendas. There are motion to accept. So move second. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Kathleen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? And next, Stephanie. Conferences, sustainability, plan, progress, and what?
Yeah, just to be clear, those last items that you had were presentations, which are like fifteen minutes or less. This is on the in-depth discussion items, so I'm not held to the fifteen minute rule at all, nor could I meet it possibly, and it's not bad. So if y'all need to like stretch or something, do it now. Um, because this is a big, this is a big task, right? And it's the first time that we've checked in. Um, I have tried to, and then sit down about twenty slides, but uh, that's as good as I can do. So all right, yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm super glad to be here uh, to talk about the progress. I'm super glad to be here, uh, to talk about the progress that we've made on the conference of sustainability plan. I want to give a big shout out. Of course, and thanks to all the various town staff. Who are working on a daily basis to accomplish the conference of sustainability plan initiatives. Um, but also to help me track and report out on the progress that's been made. It's really across all departments. Um, people are helping us. Uh, move the, move these actions along. It's a group effort. So you guys will remember that it was June of twenty twenty three that the conference of sustainability plan was adopted. Uh, conference of plans again are the documents that provide a basis for decision-making regarding the long-term development of the town. The plan, of course, works in coordination with our other regulatory documents. Such as the strategic plan, which you'll be hearing an update about in at the November work session, I believe. The unified development ordinance, which is under a rewrite right now, and you'll be getting periodic updates there. Our utilities plans, like what we just heard, heard about and transportation plans, which I just talked to you about in September. So all of these documents work together. Uh, but the conference of the plan is sort of the, the collective future vision gathering place for a lot of, um, our goals. During the development of the conference of plan, we assessed our community's assets and resources. Uh, we considered all the sort of current and projected, um, future conditions. For each of the content chapters, and then we recommended, um, goals, strategies and actions, which are the. Um, essentially the ways in which we accomplish, um, the overall vision of the plan. Sustainability means meeting the needs of current generations without compromising the needs of future generations. And ensuring that balance between economic growth, environmental care and health, and of course, social wellbeing. So sustainability was the overall lens through which this, um, all of the recommendations in these plan was reviewed and evaluated. You'll remember, I think I've mentioned this before, that our conference of plan is more like the should do plan. It's all of our. Recommendations of what the town should be working on over a long, you know, term. Um, long term of time, you know, it could be twenty, some of these recommendations are twenty years plus out. Especially the transportation chapters and some of the, you know, housing affordability stuff. Um, whereas our strategic plan has a shorter, um, time horizon, but it's still trying to accomplish the same goals. Um, and that's our shall do plan. So anything in the strategic plan is your direction to staff to work on these things in the next one to three years. Let's see some. Let's see this stuff get, uh, pushed along. But the comments of plan does include project initiation timelines, which I'll just, uh, describe in a minute. And some of those, um, were intended to be initiated in this first period of time. So that's what I'm really going to be looking at tonight. Uh, it's been over two years since the plan was adopted and tonight's update is, uh, just, you know, progress that we've made, actions that are started and completed. And then areas for future focus. I got it. You guys remember the themes of the comments of plan were equity, affordability, safety, connectivity and health. Um, the plan also employed smart growth principles. Uh, that smart growth approach really encourages the mix of building types and uses diverse housing and transportation options. Infill development within existing neighborhoods, robust, uh, community engagement and participation. And then of course focusing on the interconnectedness between that economic, social and environmental factors. There's eleven chapters in the plan, um, but only eight of them are content chapters, and those are shown here on the right side of the screen. The other three chapters are the introduction chapter, a chapter on our public and gate, uh, public input and engagement efforts, and then the implementation plan. So don't worry, I didn't expect anyone to actually read this slide, just to be clear. This is for illustrative purposes only because I'm, I just want to remind. Everyone, uh, sort of about the overall organization of the plan. Um. Each chapter starts with a narrative section and each content chapter starts with a narrative section and it provides a review of existing conditions. All of our former planning efforts, needs assessments, data that informs the, uh, recommendations. And then at the end of each chapter, um, there's a, a, a chart of our, of the goals, the strategies and the actions. The actions are really the actionable steps to in order that we must take in order to meet our goals. Um, so that's really what we measure. They are intended to be measurable. They're also intended to be, um. Actionable because they're within the town sphere of influence, right? They're things that we, we actually have the authority to address in one way or another. And that was something that we really. Uh, tried to focus on during the plan's development so that, um, we could over a couple of years start tracking and seeing and seeing, uh. How we were meeting those goals. The graphic here on the right shows a snip of the implementation, implementation chapter. And you can see that all the actions are kind of on the left side of that box. Um, this one is from the environmental chapter, I think. Um, it also identifies that project initiation timeframe. So, uh, each action was identified during the plan making process as being. Either a zero to, uh, three years, a four to seven years or seven years plus. And I just want to remind you guys, that's project initiation, not project completion timeframe, right? And that'll make more sense in a second when we start looking into each chapter. Also not intended for you guys to read this, uh, but I want, I wanted to explain how I tracked this. So for the last couple of months, I've been working with staff. To go through each action, um, to see sort of where it falls, if it had been started or completed. Uh, and so I have a master spreadsheet, which I'm happy to provide to anyone who wants to play with it. Um, that tracks all three hundred ninety seven actions. I identified which ones were our priorities by being, uh. That, that relates to that first zero to three years, right? So it's a priority if it was identified as being something that needed to be initiated. In the first zero to three years. Okay? I also, uh, created some columns that you can see sort of on the right-hand side of the spreadsheet. Um, whether or not the actions have been started or completed, whether or not they're going to be addressed in the U D O rewrite, because a lot of them will. Um, whether or not they're being tracked in the strategic plan. And so the spreadsheet is available. I'm happy to give it to you, but what I'm going to be going over tonight is from this now. The spreadsheet that's, that we've now gone through, um, as a staff and made sure that we've, uh, investigated sort of every action to track where we are. Um, in rela- in relation to that recommendation. All right. So high level overview. So the percent, this slide is the percent of priority actions. That have been started or completed. So of the ones that were supposed to be initiated within the first zero to three years. Um, there are ninety six total priorities and sixty four of those have been started or are complete, which is about sixty seven percent overall. Fifty four of the priority items are being addressed in the U D O rewrite. They're regu- they're more regulatory in nature and that's how we're going to accomplish those actions is by. You know, making those requirements official and adopted in our U D O. And we have about thirty two, uh, priority items that have not yet started. So in just two years, we have started or completed more than forty percent of the priority actions, um, in the, in each chapter. Which is about sixty seven percent overall. So, um, yeah, I was really actually surprised to see how much progress that we've been made. I wasn't. I wasn't expecting that, um, because I feel like the last two years we've been really burdened, you know, with a lot of. Constraints, um, that we didn't anticipate when we adopted the plan. But somehow we've been able to move a lot of these things forward, which is really pretty remarkable in my opinion. I also wanted to look outside of the priority actions and just look at the overall, um. Actions in the plan, just to kind of see where we stood beyond that zero to three year initiation timeframe. So this, uh, slide shows. Uh, the percent of all actions that have been started are, are completed. There's three hundred and ninety seven total actions. A hundred and fifty six are started or completed. Um, twenty three. Are complete. A hundred and thirty three are started, um, which is about forty percent overall. So that I feel like that's pretty good too. If you're looking at. Some of these projects being, we didn't anticipate to even begin them for four to seven or even seven plus years. Let's take a look at, uh, each chapter. Um, town government and public services chapter has nine priority actions, about a little more than sixty percent of those have cha- have started. It has thirty two total actions and more than fifty percent of the total actions, um, have started. Um, they, they are, I also have something called continuous items in my spreadsheet, which relates to things that will never be finished, right? So we have some actions in the plan that are just always in process. For instance, something like, you know, partner with. Um, community organizations to, um, support local arts and cultural events, right? That's something that we're just always doing. There's never going to be a time when we have stopped doing that. So those are called continuous actions. The town, um. So the priority actions that started, um, from, uh, this chapter are listed here. The town, of course, adopted and is implementing the strategic plan. Working on our emergency, uh, pre- preparedness plans. We have participated in, uh, government alliance on race and equity, uh. Work with the Gare Network, adopted the one more interracial equity plan. Um, the board allocates annual funding in the budget to sustainability initiatives to the tune of about three hundred and twenty thousand. Dollars per year, plus the individual stormwater, public space facilities and some of our project budgets. Also include funds for other sustainability initiatives. Of the priorities that we identified in this chapter that have not yet started. Aligning the capital improvement plan with and budget and departmental plans to integrate the CSP priorities. We don't have a formal way of doing that yet. Although I think everyone, every staff member has their own way of making sure that their departmental plans are aligned with the CSP. We haven't established a, a formal way, um, to do that or a standard way to do that yet. We also will in the future be working on a training toolbox for appointed board members to educate them about their authority. And roles and responsibilities as well as how it relates to the comprehensive plan. And we just haven't gotten around to that one yet. Um, beyond the priorities though, we are making some headway in the other actions that I just thought I would mention. Um, uh, under this chapter, improving our records retention and disposition schedule. That's all Sarah over there. And training us on all, all, all of the staff on that. Instituting our much improved procurement policy, which has really changed the life of everyone who manage a bu- manages budgets and procurement in this town. Uh, promoting communication and coordination among the di- different departments through things like the employee engagement committee. Um, and other events that are held. Building trust with our community members through things like the police safety summits and, and government one oh one classes. As well as other engagement events like engage Hillsborough. And then of course coordinating with community organizations and partners to prepare for and respond to emergencies. These are all things that were outside of that zero to three year, um, project initiation timeframe, but we're making progress on all the time. For land use and development, we had twelve priority actions. Ten of those have started and two are continuous. Um, so if you think about it, really a hundred percent are in the works, um, all the time. Eight of them will be addressed in the U D O rewrite. Um, in terms of our priorities on this chapter, we are currently working on revising the urban service boundary. The future land use plan, the Wasamba and Coco agreements. I know you guys have been talking with Shannon about that pretty regularly. Um, I know Matt is also working with the county to help them better understand our water and sewer capacity. As it relates to the county's land use planning efforts and growth, so that we can make sure we're on the same page with them. The unified development ordinance rewrite is underway, um, and a lot of the priority actions in the comprehensive plan will get, um. Uh, addressed in that U D O rewrite. Tom King is here tonight. He is the project manager for that. And he and I are working closely together to make sure that those actions that are in the comprehensive plan are making their way into the U D O. And that the consultants are helping guide us and give us best practices for how to integrate a lot of these actions. Um, in fact, over half of the priorities, fifty four of the ninety six priority actions are being resolved in the U D O rewrite. So that's just a really important project, of course. Um, items that are continuous include like adjusting the hydraulic model so the water distribution system operates more efficiency. Efficiently, like you heard tonight from, uh, from Marie's consultants, investing in infrastructure that supports our preferred land use and growth patterns. Um, and then monitoring and tracking things like the distribution of commercial and residential development. To ensure that we have that sustainable, you know, balance of land uses. I wanted to give you guys a snippet of like what is coming up in the U D O rewrite for this chapter. Um, these are priority actions that will be addressed in the U D O rewrite. For instance, we will align development regulations in the U D O with smart growth principles. Um, development preferences and the development preferences that we've laid out in the conference of plan. Condensing land use classifications for simplicity, adopting things like universal design standards, incorporating strategies. To achieve a variety of housing and improving, uh, review and acceptance processes. We'll also be clarifying the roles and responsibilities of town staff and appointed boards. Um, and, and the town board as well in the development review process, just making it easier to, to explain to people how our development review processes and how our ordinance work. And improving and streamlining hopefully the street acceptance process and conditions of bond release. So there are zero priorities in this chapter that have not been started. So it's all underway. And Shannon will be given and Tom will be giving more updates about the U D O in the coming months. So for the environment natural systems chapter, we have eleven priorities, uh, forty five percent are started or completed. Uh, eighty eight overall actions, um, with thirty six percent started or completed. Thirteen are being addressed in the U D O and then we have twenty nine continuous items. Um, here you can see the priority actions that have begun. We've adopted a landscape and native plant policy for the town. We've, uh, developed a C I P plan for stormwater systems on town properties. We are currently converting all town lighting, including facilities and streetlights to more energy efficient LED fixtures. Um, all the public streetlights, excuse me. Um, for our continuous items, we, uh, continue to try to make our environmental education efforts more accessible and equitable. Through, uh, you know, creating new, uh, systems and a variety of outreach and public information methods like videos. Um, short videos that get the point across. That's kind of our new method, uh, for teaching and having those be available for people whenever they have time to watch them. As opposed to inviting, always inviting people to learn from us at a physical place. It's been a lot. It's been more helpful to kind of. Um, give that information to people in a way that they can digest on their own calendar and timeframes. Um, priority actions that have not yet started in this chapter include. Creating green infrastructure and tree preservation policies for town projects. Every time I write a to-do list, I write tree preservation policy for town project, and I've been doing that for two years and I haven't moved it anywhere yet. But it's, uh, it is something that we'll be working on soon. Also an inventory of our town trees. Um, we n- need to complete the identified critical sewer system. Uh, rehab projects to reduce and prevent sanitary sewer overflows. You guys know. That this has been made all the more difficult by the loss of brick funding and other pressures that utilities are under, as well as the impacts from Shen Hall. That's really understandable and, um. Just hard to, to address it all. It, it takes a lot of money to address those kinds of, uh, infrastructure upgrades that are needed. In terms of what's going to be addressed in the U D O rewrite, uh, we have, um. You know, in, uh, the environmental best practices and inclusion of green infrastructure. Regulations and incentives will be updating the illicit discharge and tree preservation ordinances, improving development regulations to align the town policies. With the goals in this plan, like landscaping and tree requirements and updating our prohibited plant list. That's something the tree board's already been working on. Um, for almost a year now and has, has just turned over the draft to the consultants recently. Some of the non-priority actions that have, um, already begun include adopting the, uh, comprehensive stormwater management plan that is now complete. Uh, working on jurisdiction wide watershed improvement plans and stormwater retrofit plans. And then we also completed the Eno New Hope landscape, landscape conservation plant, which is really just a fancy way of saying wildlife order plans. Um, we're also working with the M P O on regional efforts for wildlife quarters. Um, and other environmental planning that's happening at the regional and state level. Thanks to an incredible team of volunteers in town, we have been removing invasive species and restoring native habitat. Much at a much faster rate than ever anticipated. Um, they work every single week and have a, a very large, uh, group of volunteers. It's really committed to that project. Uh, last year, you'll remember we adopted an integrated pest management policy. Um, we continue to work on the Bellevue branch watershed improvement plan. Um, and we were lucky enough to support the acquisition of the classical American homes preservation trust properties. Um, by state parks and archaeological conservancy. So we're now working with those organizations as the state part, as the state park land. Um, is brought into town and working also to make it so that, um, it's available for bicycles to at least get from downtown to Elizabeth Brady Road. Which is something that we've wanted for years. Hoped for, for years. Transportation and connectivity, um, this, uh, content chapter has seventeen priorities. Uh, about forty one percent of those are complete or started. Five of them are continuous. We have, um, fourteen that will be addressed in the U D O. And some of the recommendations in this chapter are just long-term and transportation projects take forever. So you have to just be patient with transportation. A lot of times there's things we'd like to be able to initiate. Um, in zero to three years because we all know how important it is, but it's really dependent on funding prioritization, you know, through the P O. So of course we're working with the M P O to submit all of the identified projects in this plan for funding consideration and prioritization. Also working with M P O staff to, um, find out if there are o- other funding sources besides state prioritization money for some of these projects that we'd like to move forward. And they've been very helpful, um, in that we adopted a vision zero plan for town to eliminate. Um, uh, deaths in our roadways and, and, um, to make our streets safer for all. We also have a complete street policy that's been adopted by the town. We just completed the downtown parking study. Did you guys, you guys got that at the, at last month's meeting? Um, so we'll be working to implement those recommendations. Um, so we'll be working to implement those recommendations. And we now have an executed agreement with Amtrak to serve the future train station. So that one's filed. Um, and ready to go. And they're very, Amtrak's very excited to work with Hillsborough as we move forward. Um, in terms of continuous items, we will always be working to ensure that our network is more. Accessible and safe for all users, but will never be finished with that work. It will be ongoing forever. Um, some of the priorities that we haven't yet been able to address include inventorying all of our neighborhoods. To catalog the places where um things like. Handicap accessible curb ramps and crosswalks or pedestrian signage, traffic calming is needed. Um, there's a lot of work to do there and it really just comes down to being very limited in terms of our capacity. Um, the development of a method to address parking and loading issues and infractions. Um, and an enforcement strategy is not something that we have started yet. We talk about it every now and then, but we have not completed that. We haven't even started it. Um, it's it's hard to figure out what is the best way to try to get people to behave with their cars. So I'm open to ideas if you guys. Um, in terms of this chapter and its relationship to the U D O rewrite. Uh, the rewrite will incorporate updates to the sidewalk ordinance and payment and loo regulations. Um, as well as the urban uh, the universal design standards that I talked about a minute ago, which really just make. You know, for f- physical public spaces available for everyone um and improved for everyone. So a higher level of standard than like the min- the minimum um A D A code.
Stephanie?
Yes.
What, this is a dumb question.
Yeah.
I'm here where they talk about, where you're talking about structured parking. What's structure versus unstructured parking?
Sure, structured parking means uh like in a deck, in a structure versus surface. So the two words are surface and structure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I was like.
What are you talking about? Yeah, sorry about that. That's just like the industry term for.
Yeah, I just, I just, like I said.
Good, yeah, y'all please stop me at any time if I'm going too quickly or if you have any questions, so um, thank you for that. Um, also in the U D O, we will investigate eliminating parking minimums and instead adopting maximums. That's one of the recommendations in this plan. Incentives for the inclusion of electric vehicle charging equipment, especially in developments, but possibly also in public lots. And updating the requirements uh for when to require traffic impact assessments and how they're used. Um, we have made progress on several non-priority actions. Including creating a standard agreement for the ownership and maintenance of trails and greenways. That's thanks to Bryant. I think he's gone, but he's done a lot of work on that. Um, uh, we approved the updated safe routes to school plan. We completed the feasibility studies and selected a preferred alignment for Ridge Walk. Um, and we have invested in connectivity and walkability projects that support aging in place. And improving safety such as the speed humps that we've installed on rainy, lowering speed limits on seventy. Um, improving street lighting overall. Um, evaluating the possibility of adding a mobility hub at the train station. That is still a project that is moving through N- N C D O T's express design unit. So that we can get some cost estimates and this could work in conjunction with the train station so that people can use public transit, any even private transit. Um, you know, to finish their trips if they come to Hillsborough. Or to get to the train station. Um, we've been adding pedestrian and bicycle amenities like our new bus shelters. Binges, waste receptacles, pet waste receptacles. As budget allows, that's something that we just continue to invest in and people seem to really appreciate. Um, we have been participating in the countywide bicycle and trail planning efforts to make sure that those countywide. And then beyond that, regional plans align with our comprehensive sustainability plan. A county has a trails plan and a bicycle plan going right now, so we've been really heavily invested in that, making sure that those plans align. Um, and of course, we have a second circulator route now, which is super exciting. The orange route and the blue route. In social systems and public space, we have ten priority actions. Um, five are have started, so that's fifty percent. There's thirty nine overall actions uh with about a little more than thirty percent completer started. Two of them are will be addressed in the U D O and we have seventeen continuous items. A lot of the items in this chapter. Are sort of continuous by the nature um of the recommendations. The priorities that have started include things like working to improve. Our outreach and community engagement through public information channels. Things like our community surveys, programs like government one O one, engage Hillsborough, et cetera. Um, we did develop an equity lens, though how it will be used in the future has not been determined. Um, but we do, we did a lot of work to get that equity lens together. Um, we have partnered with and support, support and continue to support our community groups and nonprofits that provide. Access to food like porch and O C I M and Family Success Alliance. Um, communications has also been working on the accessibility of the town website and other public information materials that they send out. We, we have um been working to incorporate uh, have y'all heard of Septed or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design? Okay, and I should have spelled it out. I mean, think, oh, I did, Crime Prevention Through Environmental. Because Catherine's not here, but if I didn't spell it out, she would ha- she would.
It is wicked cool.
It is wicked cool. And actually, this is something that I studied in depth when I was in graduate school twenty years ago. And one of the things that really made me interested in public space planning from the very beginning, because it's essentially using environmental. Um, tools and design tools to make sa- spaces safer because they make people behave in different ways and they look. You know, it's things like lighting and visibility and uh, ha- you know, having openings and how you use landscaping, just thinking about spaces from that. Sort of visibility and also inviting people into spaces so that then there's an ownership within the community. One of the places where we've done a really good job of this in Hillsborough is Kings Highway Park. Used to be. Like what, what was the word, Rob? Creepy was the number one word in our like word bubble of Kings Highway.
Oh, it was beyond creepy. It was, it was very witchy.
I remember trying to go to Kings Highway Park when I was in high school and. I just got the vibe that I wasn't supposed to be there.
Right, it was.
I was like, oh my gosh, so great.
So the only thing we did there is we, through the investment of, you know, town funds, we opened up the parking lot. We got some lighting, we got better trashcans. We have a. Park uh pu- some park patrol and park stewards that keep their eyes on it and are there regularly picking up the litter. Um, and then creating destinations, things like picnic areas, interpretive signage, the bio dock, which is now gone and the. Boating wetlands, but maybe we'll get them back. Um, but that park has a really different feeling now and that's crime prevention through environmental design. So that's something that we'll be hopefully um integrating in the U D O rewrite.
We actually first in Hillsborough with Community Watch twenty years ago.
Yeah.
It was.
Well, it was something we talked about during the original seventy quarter plan. Um, strategy. That was when I was fresh out of grad school, but this is something that still really excites me and you can kind of reclaim the space and. Help it be safer and just more inviting for everyone.
Well, Fairby Park is is done that and actually with Habitat, even though they didn't name it. They did do that with Community Garden and how they did. Um, the neighborhood, i- i- if y'all ever saw where uh. That part of Fairby was before and after Habitat, it's another area where it's utilizing septic practices.
Yeah, yeah, there's some really cool classes on there uh online and and through different planning organizations. If anyone's interested in that, I can set you up. But it's a, it's a really neat system learn. It's a little bit like urban, I mean, like uh, universal design as well. It's like what you're doing is you're trying to. Make sure you're designing environments for the types of activities. You know, that are helpful to community building. Um, okay, so. Some of the priorities that will never be complete, that we will always be improving are things like our outreach methods to neighborhood groups. Um, addressing the gaps in our communication. Um. That's just always a struggle, you know, trying to figure out how to reach people, you know, how to reach people with accurate information. How to reach the people that have the inaccurate information that somehow seem to be able to reach all of the people that we can't reach faster than us. That's one of those things that we really struggle with. Um, and some of the non-priority actions that we have been able to start. Um, are things like adopting master plans for all of the cemeteries, parks and riverwalk. Now, those are all online. On our website and the Parks and Rec Board is actually working on its first official update to uh, one of the. Park plans that was one of the original ones uh at Kings Highway Park. Allocating resources to fund our public art projects. We've increased the annual amount to twenty five hundred dollars each year. At least that's what the crest is. And it's been funded now for two years in a row. We also have the addition of three, our, our three permanent sculptures at Town Hall. Um, the two new ones are coming on November fifth at nine A M. If anyone wants to come and watch the artists install, they're doing it at the same time so they can help each other. It was really sweet. Um, that they got to know each other through the Upward Festival and so both artists are coming with trucks and art the same day to help each other install. And we'll be there as well. Um, we continue to implement master aging plan recommendations, which is a countywide plan. Um, that we contribute to trying to improve the ability for senior populations to age in place. Having convenient access to services and amenities. Um, if you can make a community safe and accessible for seniors, it's also bet more safe and accessible for everyone else. So that's again, some of this universal design concept. Um, and then there's been, there's been all the work to help advance. High, access to high speed internet. So this fiber project, luckily I had almost nothing to do with it. But from that outside looking in, this has been a significant amount of time in the last two years for other staff that aren't me. Um, so we had, you know, that's one of the goals in the plan was to, was to do everything we could and I think they did.
Are only a fraction. Of that, that.
Yeah, major, major uh time was given from town staff to try to help those projects go as smoothly as possible. And to resolve issues and problems when they arise. So big thanks to all of those folks. Housing and affordability, um, this chapter has twenty priority actions. About forty percent of those have started. There's fifty overall actions. About twenty four percent have started. Um, ten will be uh addressed in the U D O rewrite and there's thirteen continuous items. This topic is the hardest one, in my opinion, to influence because affordability is related to market forces. And so that sphere of influence I was talking about in the beginning, like it's pretty narrow, but we're trying. Um, the priority items that we have been able to start are shown here. Last year, this board adopted guiding principles for the development of affordable housing. We have also started to collaborate with the partners on countywide housing plan. Um, and tracking its progress. Matt can speak much more intelligently to all this work as he's, he's the, the lead really on affordable housing for us. Uh, we continue to work with partners to preserve and retain existing affordable housing as well. Priorities that have not yet started, um, include learning more about uh affordable housing trust funds and how they may. Help achieve Hillsborough's affordability goals, improving or updating affordable housing payment and loo policies for Hillsborough. Um, is also one of the priorities that I don't think has, has really gone forward because we've been working on the countywide plan. Topics that will be addressed under this chapter in the U D O rewrite include developing incentives for affordable housing. Incorporating regulations that increase the diversity of housing, including the type, the ownership, the size, the configuration. Um, again, aligned with those smart growth principles, uh, that variety is good, is good growth. Adopting regulations to allow more flexibility and creativity in design. Promoting higher densities where appropriate and aligned with the land use and development chapter. The U D O rewrite also will include regulations that provide more missing middle housing, encourage additional accessory dwelling units in the residential areas. Uh, development regulations that improve accessibility. And safety, like I was talking about with Septed and and universal design, those come up again and again throughout the, the plan. Because they're really one of the things that we can influence in terms of investments that also like hit sustainability in, in multiple areas. And then in this, in incentives for a green infrastructure as well as climate and energy um initiatives. Economic systems and tourism, a chapter has ten priorities, forty percent are complete or started. Uh, thirty one overall actions with about twenty five percent complete or started and four are addressed in the U D O. Um, on this slide, you can see uh the priority actions and the actions in the U D O rewrite. We completed the downtown parking plan and of course, continue to work on the train station plans. We have an approved site plan now for the train station, um, but we're hoping to submit those plans to North Carolina Railroad and Norfolk Southern very soon. The U D O rewrite includes best practices for economic resiliency as well as sustainability and equity. Measures and it also includes updates to things like our signage and sidewalk dining regulations. To better reflect the goals of the comprehensive plan, but also to support businesses. Yeah.
Correct question.
Sure.
It might be a Tom question, um, not sure. Um, but with the signage, signage, the signage regulations will um. Parts of the um historic district guidelines have to be updated for that as well, or how will that?
I would assume since, I, I think right now, if I remember correctly, if signage in the store, if it beats the. Um, standards that we currently have in the U D O that I think staff can do that. Approved signage to higher works. Most of that happens, you know. Except for commercial district downtown, so.
Yeah.
They're mostly.
So the.
Hanging projecting signs.
Yeah, so the size of the sign is determined by the U D O in that central commercial district and that would be downtown, but also West Hillsborough. Has C C as well, but that's out of the district, but it's the same zoning district. But the like location and materials of the sign is in the H C C regulation. So I think what will be. Um, what the consultants will be looking at here is if the signage regulations are too restrictive in certain areas of town. Which is definitely feedback we've heard before from businesses. Of course, they're always gonna want bigger signs. But then the question is, what is the right size to maintain that balance, right?
Neon.
Huh?
And neon.
I, I have a question too.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things and that we did and, you know, let me back up when um. When I was in Portland and I saw how they did their outdoor dining.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than extending sidewalks, they built structures in the street and the parking.
Yeah.
Corridors.
Sure.
It was actually kind of cool. And I know we did not do that. Was that because of, of weather? I mean, what was, or is it D O T?
Cause they, yeah, I was gonna say, does anyone wanna guess why we couldn't do that? It's cause all the roads where we have sidewalk dining are, are state roads and they don't allow. Those are called like a, a parking, um, what do they call them, like? Oh, there's a name for it. It's like, um.
Cause it looked like it would be less expensive.
They tried it on Franklin Street. Thank you, that's right, little parklets. Asheville has some and Chapel Hill had some.
Yeah, cause Portland, that's, you see, that's a fit, almost all they use and they're down.
Are you talking about Portland, Oregon or Maine?
No, Maine.
Okay, yeah, so streets work really differently in every state and I'm not super familiar with Maine, but most. Most states have more local control and more local streets. All of our major streets are state.
No, they're, they're a home rule state, so it's totally different for there. But it struck me, you know, me, I understood, you know, the sea having be able to, needing to handle rain and, you know.
It absolutely can't happen here because the rule, the D O T rule is that you cannot have sidewalk dining within six feet of a travel lane. So even our sidewalk dining, like, let's take Cup of Joe, for instance.
Yeah.
At one point, we had talked about whether or not Cup of Joe dining, whether the. Handicap accessible path should be like on the interior, but now as you remember, it's sort of on.
Right.
It's not actually all the way to the side, cause there's signs, but it's like in the middle. And we had tried to figure out where was the best place for that, but you can't be within six feet of, of the road surface and so. That's why the dining has to move over and that's a D O T regulation.
Okay.
They won't issue a sidewalk dining permit without it.
But it was just something that uh, I, I wasn't really clear on.
I think Portland, Oregon was the town that had um, mobile parklets that were like on. Like, of course, um, they're on like these little hand carts and they would like. They're not, they're not legal, but they would just like move them every day to a new spot and then. Town couldn't then enforce it anyway. That was like guerrilla, guerrilla urbanism, urban design there.
No, these definitely permanent and purposeful.
Yeah, I think Asheville had some of those too.
Thank you.
Um. Where were we? Oh, yes. So some of the priorities that we have not been able to start in this chapter are building a database to document things like. Women owned, veteran owned, BIPOC owned and small businesses in town. Um, that's a huge project, not sure where to start. Uh, training town staff and elected officials on the available economic development incentives and strategies. So that all of you and all of us are saying the same things to people who are interested in locating here. Um, that's something I know that Shannon wants to work on. And then, of course, educating the community on the non-discrimination ordinance that prohibits discrimination on. Uh, that's something that we had, you know, intended to start in the first year to three years and keep in mind, we still have a year left, so uh, maybe we'll get that one checked off the list. Later next year, we'll be conducting a market analysis and schematic plan for the Hillsborough Station property. Matt will be leading those efforts. That's everything. On that, you know, Collins property outside of the train station itself to determine the right uses, densities, mix of uses. Um, on that site and that is definitely part of our economic development uh plans for the town. Several non-priority actions that we have been able to make progress on are updating the hazard mitigation plan to incorporate potential economic disruptions. Um, and post-disaster relief strategies as well as addressing things like. Snow removal in the central commercial district. Uh, we now have a contractor that's on call. To clear sidewalks in downtown and West Hillsborough in the Avenas. Seems like a small thing, but it's a really helpful thing when we wanna get our, you know, people walking around safely uh a- after snow events. And the, the last content chapter was climate and energy. In that chapter, we have seven priorities. And the, the, the last content chapter was climate and energy. In that chapter, we have seven priorities. About seventy-one percent of those have started, fifty-four overall actions with about thirty percent, a little more than thirty percent started. Two are addressed in the U D O and eleven are continuous. So just tonight, you approved the, on the consent agenda, participating in the solar feasibility study uh for town facilities, which will evaluate sites also for things like battery backup and our energy storage needs. That study will get underway in the next few months now that we can sign the M O U and get going. We also continue to apply for grants as they become available and when they seem like a good fit to expand our public E V charging network. We have not received the grants that we've applied for yet. We've been working with Chapel Hill, Carboro and Orange County on joint grants because of that. You guys remember the electric vehicle suitability analysis that was countywide? We feel like our grant applications.
Level two charger.
The level two chargers. Yeah, we've, and those would be publicly accessible, you know, publicly owned and accessible chargers. We feel like going in together makes it a stronger grant. The problem is those funds are also being depleted down each year. So it's harder, it's more competitive and it's hard, it's harder to get them. Um, in terms of continuous items, we are continuing to monitor progress towards meeting our clean energy pledge and investigating opportunities to incorporate uh sustainability and climate initiatives at all of our facilities. Things like weatherization and insulation, more energy efficient equipment. As you know, as older equipment ages out, we're making sure to choose the most energy efficient equipment, um things like smart, smarter thermostats. Um, and just uh equipment that'll help us conserve energy and reduce costs at town facilities. So as I mentioned earlier, the U D O will incorporate incentives for solar energy uh generation as well as E V charging infrastructure for private developments. That's not something we can regulate, but we can create incentives for it. Um, so that's something that the consultants will be looking into, hopefully giving us some best practices and things that actually work. We'll also include incentives for the green infrastructure in the rewrite. Uh, that, and green infrastructure is just a really easy way to help reduce energy burden, uh burden and build in a more sustainable way. The areas for future focus in this chapter um include evaluating the town's fleet to determine rate sizing and transition to E V. All of our neighbors are going to E V really fast and I'm starting to see problems with that. So I'm glad that we're taking a slow approach. These, this is incredibly expensive endeavor to transition your fleet to electric vehicles. And there's a lot of questions about what happens when electricity isn't available. Um, and also the market isn't really supplying the types of vehicles that our fleet has yet, which are mostly like large, the larger vehicles.
And when I was, um, again, at, at N R C, um, several of the, of the cities and towns were, had, had made significant progress of like the dump truck, the dump trucks, the, the, I call it the big municipal stuff.
Yeah.
Going to electric.
Yeah, I will say that I don't wanna throw anyone under the bus. This is, that's a pun, but there's some electric buses that people have invested in that are not working the way that they're intended to work to.
Actually, I have a comment about.
Yeah.
And a little bit, we would get to everything. I've got a comment about the buses. They're separate from, it's, that's a whole.
Like, like other heavy equipment.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
At least for this, completely differently. Heavy equipment, people are, I, I was shocked
Yeah.
at how happy they are with that so, you know, so far maintenance has been good, the utility has been good. Um, you know, the overall, you know, what you, the value for the investment and um, I was impressed.
Yeah, that's a good story to hear, cause it's, it's a little bit mixed review in the sustainability director's network of like, ooh, did we make a mistake by going too far? Like, I think there's probably a balance. Luckily, this is not something, this isn't really my area. I can track it, but Matt knows more about electric vehicles, a lot more than I do. Bryant knows a lot more about electric vehicles and Eric knows a lot about vehicles in general. So when they work with David Wisely, our fleet manager, to figure out what is the best way for us to write size, I feel like we have all the right people to make those decisions.
I can only tell you, this is coming from other elected officials and regional council
Yeah.
staff and, and folks, so.
That's good.
And from across the country.
Well, we have been slow. That is an area of future focus for us. There's also not, like, we're not gonna replace the vehicles until it's time to replace them. We might as well get all of the life out of the ones that we have, so. Um, advocating for and coordinating with state and regional and nonprofit partners to advance climate and energy goals. Um, things like policies and incentives to decarbonize the state's electricity supply and expand access to alternative energy and efficiency programs and technologies. That's the kind of stuff that you guys do out there on the, on the regional and, and state, you know, boards where you represent us and the citizens of Hillsborough uh to advocate for and lobby for those types of larger legislative um and lobbying changes. Um, let's see, we, we've also made some progress on, on some of the non-priority actions like tracking energy at use at our town facilities. Um, I'm gonna show you that in a minute. I'll come back to it. Uh, we've been able to reduce a lot of the single-use plastics and eliminate styrofoam at town events like the employee picnic. Um, we're prioritizing electronic filing and reducing printing and copying um at, across all departments, installing things like bottle fillers on water fountains, installing L E D fixtures, which I spoke to a little bit earlier. Um, providing recycling at all of our facilities, parks, public spaces. Uh, that's been, you know, something we've been staging in over the last five or six years, but we've continued to be able to make those investments luckily. Um, we also launched something called the Climate Corner. Do you guys get the employee newsletter? Yeah, so at the bottom, there's the little climate corner. That's a, in, in the newsletter, it's a way, it's an educational campaign that informs staff ways that they can just assist us um to give people maybe new creative ideas, things that they can do to help us reduce our energy um use. So I think there's a lot of progress. I think there's a lot to celebrate, more than I was expecting. Um, and I do think it's important to take time like this to like look back and see how far we've come. Yeah.
I don't wanna channel my inner Kate Blanchard, but leaf blowers.
But when?
Leaf blowers.
Yeah.
Electric people, say.
Yeah.
Do we have to blow leaves in downtown every Monday?
Um, we, we do blow leaves downtown every Monday morning, very early in the morning. And that is because it helps the businesses. The businesses have asked for it. So it's one of those things where we probably, we don't, we don't have to do it, but we do it as a courtesy for the businesses. Because when you don't blow the leaves, what happens is the, the leaves end up coming into the businesses or they end up each blowing them themselves, which then it's not really their area. And also they tend to blow them into the storm drains, which is not what we want. We don't want leaves going into the storm drain. So when we hire contractors, we can train them to like minimize the amount of leaf blowing that happens. And only in these particular areas, we have a little bit more control over it than when we just don't do anything. So it's kind of a compromised situation. Now, I have asked our contractors, every time we do the grounds maintenance contract, I've asked people to let me know if they have access to or could provide electric equipment. And so far, the answer is that they don't have enough um ability to have the batteries for like a full day worth of work. Yeah, like the equipment hasn't uh quite caught up to the commercial scale. There is electric equipment, but it doesn't last long enough for them to be able to employ.
It's made by multiple batteries.
Lots and lots of batteries. Yeah. Yeah, I wanna have a panel to charge batteries.
Yeah, we have a trailer, tons of, bought a trailer, solar, it's solar powered and it powers all our electric stuff. Um, and it's new, but they've, they're transitioning to the blowers.
And that's the town that provides that. I haven't been able to find that in the private market of people who are also certified to work in D O T ride of ways, if that makes sense.
Was your, the question around the noise and the pollution?
Yeah.
Of the leaf blowers, mostly.
Yeah. It does put particulates in the air. I think everyone agrees that they're also just annoying. And sometimes it feels crazy because like they blow them down the block and then these pull them this way and then these pull them back in the yard and then these people wake them up and blow them back into the street. And I feel like there's like a leaf cycle happening there, but um.
Channel my Kate Blanchard.
No, I'm with you.
That YouTube video.
I'm with you. I just also think that a lot of the leaves end up like right in front of the businesses and there's also some safety considerations when they get, when leaves get stacked up and wet. So it's a little bit of a compromise there. I do, before I uh finish up, I added a couple slides that you guys didn't get in your packet. Um, I sort of threw these in today, so they're not perfect, but I just wanna give you a little snippet of what our energy management software looks like. Um, so this is, it can do so much. And I'm just learning and also I'm not very good at it yet, so bear with me. Um, I have a consultant that works with me and answers a lot of questions. But we are, uh, we do have an energy data management system. It was designed specifically with Hillsborough in mind for us. Um, it is individualized and the consultant luckily is local, so he provides a lot of, of, uh, almost sometimes daily, but certainly weekly um help to me as I try to understand it. Um, these are some of the charts that I can churn out from it. Uh, it was one of our top climate and energy priorities in the conference of plan. Um, so we worked with Daniel Kaufman of InPira uh to build the model and then we, um what we do now is we co- collect and da- database all of the town operations, electricity, natural gas, fuel and water use each month. And we've been doing that for just over a year now, so like a year and maybe three months. Um, thi- this allows us to sort of track trends um to visualize what's happening at different facilities throughout the year. It also helps expose things like waste. We have started to look at things like when we're running peak energy and how much more that costs us and could we we're, we're tracking pump stations, so like, we're pumping into a water tower if we move it thirty minutes later and aren't paying peak. How much money could that possibly save the town? You know, just some of these kind of economic strategies.
This is more like clean and smart cities combined.
It is, I don't know those in particular, but I will say that this is not just about climate and sustainability. It's also, this is about economic sustainability as well.
Is sports, you know, smart cities, like what they do in Charlotte, is Charlotte sports, these pri- uh principles. So it's a combination of private and public. Long story short, but um, it is tra- you know, macro tracking all the usage, but it is timing the, the usage, the type of usage. Um, switching out usage so that it's going cleaner. Uh, but also on that economic re- uh, uh, reducing the amount of power used. Uh, and not, you know, getting those, the, the greenhouse gas
Yeah.
down, but along the way, as you point to.
Yeah.
The, the usage drops dramatically.
Yeah, and we can convert our energy usage into greenhouse gas metrics, which actually you could see here, right? So that's really helpful. That's something the model does, cause I cannot do that kind of math in my head. Um, this stuff is really hard to understand, but Daniel, uh, he's like, uh, he's just a pro at this. And, and can, um, if there was ever a time where any of you wanted like specific information about something, like he will uh, under our contract with him, he will help, you know, get that information for you and deliver it.
Regions, the regions.
He does, he works for a lot of the municipalities in North Carolina. He may even have some South Carolina municipalities. And he's also been a consultant with Duke Energy, so he understands the other side of it too and how the rate models work, which is really helpful.
Because we, I know Carrie is deeply involved.
She probably knows Daniel Kaufman.
Okay.
Most, or he.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Harrison for Carrie.
Oh, Carrie the city. They, I am sure they know Daniel.
But like I said, um, you know, smart cities, clean cities, th- those two parallel um efforts and organizations very strong, you know, super strong, strong, strong in the triangle.
Yeah.
But.
So Chapel Hill and Orange County also use InPira. So we're all using the same because then we can also talk to each other and coordinate on things like grant applications. Um, we can look at the trends, we can run any interval, we can run simulations. Um, in terms of if we wanna track a certain conservation measure, we can put those, um, you know, put a methodology and, and assumptions into the model and see what that does at a different facility. So the solar feasibility study, I can, once we get returns on that, I can work with Daniel to see, you know, what does this do in terms of costs? I can give you guys a lot better information about what those types of investments and return on investments will be. Um, and yeah, so, but I don't quite know how to use it yet.
For those arrows, you go back one step.
Oh, yeah.
So the, like the forty percent electricity of the arrow up, is that usage or is that uh dollars or what is that?
Increase from the previous month.
Oh, yeah, that's an increase.
Increase from the previous month.
Yeah, this, these are just, yeah, to be able to look at two different time periods and see what the changes are. So let me show you, this one, this next slide is actually, I think, one of the uh more useful things that I've done in the last week. Um, this is a comparison of our baseline year, which was F Y eighteen. Right? So you guys remember when the town, I think Jen Dela Valley was the project lead on this, is before the conference of plan. Jen worked with the COG.
Yep.
To do an energy audit and write at all of our facilities. So luckily, uh, our model is built in such a way that we could still use a lot of that baseline data. Um, we also, through the conference of plan, collected more baseline data for that year that we didn't have in the original study. So you can see that over seven years, we've only had an increase of two percent. I mean, I'm sorry that we haven't gone down, but to hold. This is during a growth period in town. Um, you know, our aim eventually is to see a decrease, but it, to me, it's impressive to basically stay flat over seven year period of time. Our organization does not have fat to trim. Um, other than, other than kind of mistakes or waste that we don't know about. Um, when we, uh, our energy use, the only way we're likely to see overall energy use decrease in town is to invest in large-scale alternative energy, energy production. Right? Like, that's the only way we're gonna ever see this come down. But I do feel very proud that our conservation efforts, our education efforts um, do seem to have at least kind of like held us so that we're not growing exponentially. Um.
Am I reading this right? Though Stephanie, that lighting significantly shrunk.
Yeah.
Down facilities. Went down, but basically unchanged and that.
Yeah.
The
This is.
Growth we had was mostly just within water, wastewater.
Electricity, yeah. Yeah. This is electricity used in the water, water and wastewater. Um, so some, and we're treating more water. We have more customers than we did seven years ago. So there are efficiency measures that, that Jeff has also put in. Right.
I mean, that's, that's impressive.
I think so. I was surprised. I mean, I was scared to run this. But no, I think, I, and as we learn more about this, I'll be able to give you the better data. So again, just keep in mind that I'm still just trying to learn this. Um, the, the last slide that I was gonna show you is just a case study. Town Hall is one of our most energy inefficient buildings that's not related to water and wastewater. Or I guess ineffi- it's probably our most inefficient building by square footage. Um, the we, wa- water and wastewater operations uh use a lot of energy um because of the nature of those operations. So in, for over a two-year period from F Y twenty-three to F Y twenty-five, um, we actually saw a decrease. So the blue dots here are F Y twenty-three and the orange dots are F Y twenty-five. Um, seeing that slight energy savings, I attribute it to several conservation measures that we put into place. We have new smart thermostats in town that can be controlled from Rod's phone. Um, and he, they can be set for like different times of day, different seasons, um, the schedule. When none of us used to know how to run the thermostat before, before Rod started working, so they were like the same all year long. And then if you were uncomfortable, he would just go to the thermostat and like knock the button up until we were all sweltering. And then you would like, someone else would knock it down and turn the A C back on in the middle of December, cause it was too hot. Um, so luckily, just having Rod, I think we're moving to just a smarter system. Um, definitely the most electricity used at Town Hall is from H vac systems. Um, which we can also pull out of this model, like specific things like just, um, just H vac energy. So because of the way that things are metered. Um, removing things like inefficient space heaters, that was actually done for a safety measure, like getting people to get rid of their space heaters. It was like fire safety issue, but everyone used to have their own individual space heater in their office.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's gone now. Um, we have been reminding employees through things like the climate counter, you know, just to be the climate corner, just to be responsible, like turning off lights and equipment when not used. Computer abilities also sends out um information about like shutting your computer down, which I think we used to all leave our computers on. So I think that some of the savings comes from that, but also we have reduced staffing on campus. We have not grown a whole lot in those two years as an organization at Town Hall. But we do have people that are remote and that, and remote saves energy, if you think about the office uses, right? Um, we also have some people that work alternate schedules, like Monday through Thursday, ten hours. And so then you have much less energy burden on a Friday. Um, so I haven't really dug into this data yet, but those are the types of things that we would like to dig into and understand better, cause it helps us tell our story and it helps us figure out where we can move the needle.
Jen went remote. That's all Jen.
Um, anyway, we continue to look for anomalies, we look for waste. Uh, we're just trying to help visualize our picture and understand our load so that we can understand, you know, how to hopefully move the needle even more.
Does this include, um, looking at Town Hall, does that include the barn?
Yeah, this is Town Hall campus.
And during that time, we did the renovation.
Uh, no, the renovation was before this, before F Y twelve, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is after the renovation.
Gosh, then imagine what it was.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. Yeah, we changed the H, uh, uh, some of the, a lot of the H vac equipment in these years too, so we have, we have better H, uh, you know, heat pumps too, which makes a huge difference with the less we use. So anyway, I, I just want you to know that we have the software, we are learning to use it. Daniel understands it much better than us. Um, as we move forward in the future, I hope that we can really utilize it and come to understand what kinds of information it can tell us, but um, it's nice that it's there and it's available and he's keeping it updated every month, thankfully.
Very cool.
Yeah, so I, I just wanna congratulate everyone. I feel like, I, I mean, I, putting all of this together, I mean, we feel like, oh, you know what? We do come around, actually. Like, we've gotten a lot done in two years, so. I'm happy to answer any questions or, or also give you guys any additional information. I'm not gonna answer any questions or, or also give you guys any additional information.
Thank you for the report. That was really informative in course, and it's good to, to check in on that, so in the lower one, where we are now. Okay. Committee updates and reports. I did not make a list of what. Who met. This past month, so I'll just kind of fill in the table. Megan, did you have any?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, UNRBA met and, um, was off our regular schedule. But we discussed the development rules or the draft of the, the rules that the UNRBA is coming up with. And, um, how that work with, um. The Department of Water Resources is going, cause they're also developing rules. So we just discussed. How that progress is going. Um, it's, an expected package still is January of twenty-six. And then we also, uh, discussed shortly, uh, the effects of HB nine twenty-six. And how, um, as a town, we won't be able to. Let's see, make sure, maybe I'll just read this directly. Um, that no stormwater permit management plan or post-constructions. Stormwater controls shall be required under the Falls Lake New Development Rule. Um, and that's for development that is under one acre. So, um, translate that if you're under an acre, then we won't, as a town, be able to impose any stormwater plan on. Did you read that right?
Yeah, that's an acre of land disturbed, so that. Maybe there was some kind of projects where the threshold had been twelve thousand square feet. And relaxing that standard essentially to be friendly to the development.
Uh, so that was our meeting.
Thank you. And what did you say about January?
Oh, um, the, um, UN, UNRBA, their package of draft rules to submit on to the, um. The GMC, right? Um, will be in January of twenty-six. The, but the board will approve that package to move on to the next step.
Thank you. Rapid committee assignment options?
Uh, yep, we had, uh, partial recreation, uh, I mean, last week. Um, then Stefan mentioned, um, King's Highway Park is one of our first park master plans that we did. Two thousand eight?
Uh, it was twenty sixteen.
Twenty, twenty sixteen, I'm sorry. Um, but we are, um, engaged now in, uh, doing a rewrite of that master plan. So we're, um, looking at everything that's there and, um. Complete getting, um, some citizen feedback, um. Regular users that use it, we can, um, do lighting also for, um, we're updating that master plan. Um. Hmm, on that, on the side note, so then we did have somebody come in and sort of improved the, the dog park where the screen fence. It was, uh, taken down by town staff, but he felt was, he was.
What's, what's? You explain.
Uh, apparently it was too windy and so he took it upon himself to put up, um, wind screens on, uh, two sides of the dog park.
You mean on the chain link fence?
Mm-hmm. And then he came down to Town Hall to, to share his enthusiasm. Told that, like, this is gonna be removed and that again is going, uh.
That'll work.
Alter it away.
It was a lot of work.
So, yeah, so that's kind of stuff that, you know, just happens in partial recreation. That's why they create. Sitcom. I can't make it up. Um, Megan, Kathleen and I went to the UNC School Government for the Housing Seminar on the sixteenth. Um, and then Megan and I again had another, uh. Twenty twenty-five Chapel Hill Carver Leadership, um, will be clicking everybody up for, uh. For donation in the near future. If you haven't heard about the nonprofit Family Reading Partners, uh, nonprofit in Chapel Hill that, uh. Focus on early readers and trying to get, um, regular habits for kids, uh, under five, reading on a regular basis. And take books and volunteers in homes and, uh, kind of teach and model, um, regular reading.
This, this is your small miracle.
Is this, uh, is Dolly's Imagination Library not active?
No, it is, it is, but, uh, not everybody can access, um. There's something with it. They do, they do utilize Dolly, there's some meditation or something.
Well, the Family Reading Partners, um, they, volunteers go directly into the family, where the Dolly Imagination Library is. You get the book set home. So it's actually making sure the book gets opened and read to the children also.
And also really kind of just like on children, for young children, yes.
Thank you. Uh, I have no report.
Uh, no report, though. I think we've got two back-to-back DPO, um. Meetings, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, and I wasn't able to make the, um, COG, so we'll get to Evelyn.
Yep. Um, I've got, I've got a bunch. Um. Speaking of COG, so Lee is going around to all of the jurisdictions, all fifty-one. Uh, local governments, so we haven't been, we haven't been visited yet. And I was gonna ask Matt, when will Lee be visiting us, do you know? Have you discussed when?
He hasn't scheduled a formal visit. He's come to see us twice recently, um, for general discussion, but we haven't had our official road trip visit. Uh, his report that came out today said that it's coming up, so could be soon.
Yep, I was gonna say the director's report, so he sent out, if you have not, if you've not received it. I will share. It's, uh, chock full of good information. Um, you know, one of the things, I'll just highlight a few things, DC COG. Um, doing a lot of housing work in collaboration with NPO, that's something that we, we want to be able to do. Um. Another, uh, on a, on a, N A R C, which is National Association Regional Council's download. Talking about a lot of jurisdictions are rethinking one-way streets. Um, that they're just not as safe. Um, Urban Institute has put out two reports on planning for housing in, in a, a regional, um. If I could only, a regional context and then addressing housing supply through target setting. Um. There's some, uh, looking at studies on impacted data centers and ethical use of AI and urban planning. Um, something for us to be aware of, EPA is looking to. Backtrack on the EPAS rules. Um, also there's some studies looking at the role of synthetic data. And government, which is, it's been going out in actual, it's, it's synthesized data. Um. Another area that they're looking at is, uh, showing up is light art and, um, art GIS. And deep learning to map and assess curb rents and BDA options, which I thought was kind of cool. Um, a, a disconcerting, um, stat is that there is an, an eighteen percent increase in homelessness. Across the US. Uh, CEF, I don't have the dates, but CEF is doing an upcoming seminar. Um, on, uh, exploding myths on homelessness. I think it's, it's, uh, it's.
Drakeford.
Sorry?
Drakeford.
Yeah, Drakeford, yeah.
November.
Yeah, I know it's in November.
It's the twelfth.
The twelfth. There's a lot that's happening on the, on the twelfth. Um, the COG is putting together, um, there's Opportunity Zones Roundtable, which is November fifth. Foreign Trade Zone Summit, November twelfth, Connected Regions on Water Regionalization, which is on the thirteenth. Um, also for folks who may or may not be aware, Dee Freeman. Uh, who was former COG Director and activist, he died, um, not too long ago. Louis Witherspoon, who was the Mayor of Angier, and if we're involved with COG or Regional, uh, even NPO, he very, very active. Um, that's a loss. Uh, Mental Health First Aid, the sixth and seventh of November. Um. Also, uh, the Orange County, uh, Partnership in Homelessness. Uh, we've agreed we're keeping the same membership through June of twenty twenty-six. Mem- uh, membership of that leadership team is undergoing changes. The MOUs will go under changes, everything, because we are not in compliance. What is expected to happen is electors will probably not be involved. Uh, more, we'll know more as they come out more, but that's, that's a heads up of what's. What's coming in. So HUD, um, tech assistance, technical assistance is working with, uh, the partnership to get us into compliance. Um. Fairview Fall Fest was this past weekend. Uh, I did attend Snow Approach. That was pretty awesome. Um. Sorry?
Oh, just.
Making strides, so I have to give a huge shout out to Hillsborough Walmart. They were, um, acknowledged and announced all across the city of Durham for being such a huge month-long sponsor. Uh, they're selling apparel that, that is generating, um, donations. And also a huge shout out to Hillsborough Day Spa, because they are providing, they're, they are, um. Collaborating with Healing Pines to provide, uh, wellness and rejuvenation retreat for breast cancer. Well, actually, all cancer survivors who attended that out, that event. Um, we also got access as a model of the, the kickoff of October. Um, they offer that because all of the models are survivors. Um, just a huge, uh, shout out to that. Um. Um, the, the badges never did, it, the translation never did go get from point A to point B next year, that will be, but I will say this. Um. Durham, unbelievable. If you've been in Durham, you would see pink everywhere. Uh, but Capital Broadcast System, this is done in Durham Bulls, phenomenal. Uh, Roxborough, amazing. I mean, what they've done. Raleigh had all of their cars pink, everything up. And, and they, to reiterate, one of the reasons why American Cancer Society, which is, the motto is ending cancer for all. The reason why they wanted Hillsborough to be their flagship place is Orange County has the highest breast cancer rate in the state, higher than any place else. And it is, it is the number one type of cancer of all cancers. It is the second-leading cause of death of women. Of, 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 of any, any cause. So anyhow, more next year, but, um, that. Making strides, just that one event, um, raised a whole bunch. And you mentioned the seminar and that, so I think that's about it.
Thank you. Evelyn, do you have any updates?
Yeah, but I'm saying, yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right.